...of the minutes from our January meeting. Does anybody have any additions or corrections? Okay, all those, I need a motion first. I make a motion to approve the meetings.
Second.
All those approved, say aye. So you're not going to give a new report now?
Yeah.
Oh, you are, okay.
So at the February meeting, the council passed a resolution to support Cedar Lane Senior Living Community for a community development block grant application. We've done that previously. It's a pass through grant, which is about two previous pass through grants for them. They're building a new building, as I think most of you are aware, and they have asked us to support them by helping to see if we can get a pass through grant for them. It's been delayed right now, so we're not sure when, if that's going to happen, but we are planning to submit an application for them. Also gave them an update on our water tower, which is under construction, well underway at Meadows Town Run 2, and that's going really good. They're actually ahead of schedule. And then our mappetage pump station, sewer pump station out in front of Nolley's, it's been down for a couple of months now. If we have an emergency, we're rebuilding the pump station, so it's been on bypass for a while. We're just, they're starting this week to get that back up and running. So it's been below ground, it's been, it's an old pump station, so we're going to rebuild it so the guys don't have to actually go down into the, to the manhole. And then at our March meeting, we introduced an ordinance for our FY26 budget and setting the real property tax rate. We will have a public hearing at the April meeting for that. We have a budget workshop next week to work on the budget. We also awarded the municipal solid waste and disposal contract and good, they got the contract, or awarded the contract again, so we'll keep the same WV waste, which is good. And they've been our contractor for several years now, and they were the low bidders. And then we reviewed a MHAA grant, which is Maryland Heritage Area's grant, for restoration of the carousel that we have in storage. We are getting, trying to get a grant to bring in an expert that will look at it, see what needs to be done to it. It's the old Lenartown Fire Department carnival carousel that we have in storage, and we had planned to put it at the Wharf at some point. So we're just, this grant is to get it, look at, look at, with the expert to see how much it's going to cost and what we need to do to get it upgraded. We also have been, if we can use them, the hand carved wood animals, carousel animals that were done in Charles County that were carved a few years ago, they've never been used, and they've offered it to us if we can use them. So we're, they're going to be looking to see if those can be used on the carousel, and if we get this, if we get this grant. And then we also introduced ordinance number 227, which is the, for the comp plan, which we're going to be talking about today, and council will hold a public hearing next month following your public hearing today. That's all. Okay, thank you. Any questions?
The carousel, how would that work? Would it be operated and people paid and right on it?
Probably. I mean, we don't really have that planned yet. We just need to know what it's going to cost and what the building would cost to house it in, because we need to have it covered, and then we can go for grants to try, once we know that amount. So it would probably be operated by, it's going to be right by the food hall if we ever are able to get that going, and so it would probably be operated in conjunction with the food hall and head somehow.
Okay. We don't really have any other business right now, and it's too early for the hearing, so I think we will skip down to the end of our agenda and go to other business, which is the review of the monthly in-house permits. And did anybody have any questions about those?
You want to just give your preliminary for the public hearing about signing in and everything, and then Jenny can kind of do the pre-information?
Everybody that's here for the meeting today needs to sign in on our sign-in sheet, and if you are planning on speaking today, you need to check that box so that I will know who wants to speak when it comes time for the open hearing.
So if you'd like, I can go ahead and put into information about the public hearing notice that was sent out. So we did send the public hearing notice to the County Times, and they did run that in their March 6th and March 13th additions, so that it was properly publicized for the public hearing today. We did note in the public hearing notice that the written comments were to be received by 3:00 p.m. today, and then anyone that does want to speak on behalf can sign up tonight if they choose to do so. So within your packets, I did include an overall presentation, which we'll get into once the public hearing has started, but I'll go ahead and go over the timeline of the comprehensive plan as it stands today. The kickoff meeting was started back in June of last year. We've held different public meetings and different stakeholder meetings, as well as our comprehensive plan for the meetings. So we've had several of those. Most notably, the main one that we had was in October of last year. We did the final draft review in December, and we finally sent that to the state and the county for their official 60-day review in January. And then we did receive their comments back on March 11th, and we're, again, proceeding forward with the public hearing process for the Planning Commission, the Town Council, and then hopefully having our adoption and effective date in by the end of June, so And I also believe that we received four items of written comments that you should have in your packets, so I'll go ahead and introduce, introduce those while we're waiting. So the first letter that you have is from our Main Street Advisory Council, and we do have our Main Street Advisory Council Chair here. So they did submit their letter on March 17th, mayor and town council. "The Main Street Advisory Board has worked for the last year to develop our mission, values, and goals for downtown Lenartown, specifically its Main Street District. We recently met with various groups, including the Comprehensive Plan Committee, Mahan Reichel and Associates, and Arnett Muldro and Associates, to review the strategy for future development. As the council updates the comprehensive plan for 2025, the advisory board would like to make a recommendation for consideration. After much discussion, we recommend the implementation of an alternative zoning code option. This change has been shown to assist revitalization efforts by allowing the existing neighborhood character to flourish. As an example, form-based code enables future renovation and construction of buildings to be compatible with their surrounding neighborhood elements. The Main Street Advisory Board believes in a proactive approach to attract businesses and development to maintain and enhance the town's character." They did include Exhibit A, which references the form-based codes and different options for zoning code revisions. "We believe the vibrancy of downtown can be enhanced through diverse mix of housing options, variety of businesses, engaging retail and business experiences, and improved walkability that seamlessly connects all parts of the town. We recommend the council take into account the visual and spatial characteristics of the Lenartown streets and buildings to create an identifiable environment and atmosphere in the Main Street District. This can be achieved through the scale and scope of buildings in relation to the streets they sit on, encouraging density while maintaining our small-town feel. Ways to accomplish this would be through revisiting the maximum building height, the number of stories allowed, setback guidelines per floor, and creating density incentives in targeted locations. Comprehensive plan serves as a wonderful opportunity to align Main Street's goals on maintaining the charm and historical character of downtown Lenartown. Our board thanks you for allowing us to serve the town through planning and architecturally beautiful design. We look forward to working with you and our community in the near future." And it is signed Caitlin Folger, the Main Street Advisory Council Chair. So that's the first item that's in the record for written comments. The second letter was received in relation to AB3 Lenartown 26650 Point Lookout Road in Lenartown, Maryland, and it is from Jason Burrows. So with this request letter, written comment, they've stated that they would like to request for consideration to have their property located at 26650 Point Lookout Road included in the growth area plan for the town's comprehensive plan, which is currently being updated. They believe that the expansion of the town limits to the north end of the town along Route 5, including their property as well as other RCL, which is the Rural Commercial Limited, under the St. Mary's County zoning, commercial properties in close proximity and could provide great benefit to the town's tax base, provide employment opportunities to town residents, and have little to no impact on schools. These properties have frontage on a major arterial road with a sewer line that runs along Route 5 from Bannaker School to the current town limits. This is currently being utilized by Netcom. It is our understanding that numerous properties in the area have hooked up to public sewer and there's, after their septic systems have failed. As the businesses in this area upgrade and expand their properties, we envision a Maryland Route 5 gateway into the town limits with the unique street skate corridor enhancements to announce the entrance of the town." And this is signed by Laura Clark for Jason Burrows, and they have attached a exhibit showing where their property is located on the St. Mary's County map. Okay, we have a couple of minutes left, so I'll do a, I think we can get through these before it starts. The third letter we have is regarding another request for annexation. This is for the properties located at 40605 Eddie Nelson and 26415 Point Lookout Road, which is also known as the McGee Farm. They are looking to have this annexed into the town. As far as the development proposal, they feel it aligns with the development in the town and would have greater control over the property's future land use. It could generate vital tax revenue and assure alignment with town's vision. Development on this site is inevitable whether an annexation occurs or not, and annexation would allow Lenartown to shape the project and realize the benefits from it. They did include a lot of information about the property within the letter itself for everyone to review, and it is signed by Eric Turner with Turner Development. And then finally, we just received verbal comments, which we have put into written format, from Mr. Mike Mama of Perion Properties, who's requested that the property he owns on 41680 Courthouse Drive receive a possible consideration for rezoning from commercial office to include a residential use, which can be discussed later. And those are the written comments that we did receive.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn our meeting and open the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Okay, say aye.
Aye.
When you get up to speak, you can stand where you are and state your, your name and your address for public record.
Okay. So we did introduce the public notices. As mentioned before, they were advertised properly in the County Times on March 6th and 17th. All right, now I'll give a overview of the staff report. So this public hearing is for ordinance number 227 in regards to the Lenartown 2025 Comprehensive Plan update. In accordance with the land use article with the annotated Code of Maryland, each jurisdiction is required to update their comprehensive plan every 10 years. The town's last update was in 2010, and therefore we are on schedule for our 10-year update. The town, along with our consultant, Mahan Reichel Associates Incorporated, has held multiple public forums and stakeholder meetings to receive input from the public, as well as utilizing our Comprehensive Plan Committee and Main Street Advisory Council. Maryland law requires that local jurisdictions forward their comprehensive plan draft to the state of Maryland 60 days prior to holding a Planning Commission public hearing, and we did so on January 10th, and received their comments on March 11th, 2025. Those comments and our proposed responses are included in your packet. The town council did introduce the Comprehensive Plan Ordinance number 227 on March 10th, and their public hearing is scheduled for April, in April. We had April 14th. We're not sure if that's the exact date it's going to be at this point, but we're still trying to get on schedule for April. So the staff's recommendation with regard to the comprehensive plan for the Planning Commission is to review the comprehensive plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission must hold at least one public hearing and recommend adoption of the plan to the town council. The town council may adopt, modify, remand, or disapprove the draft that the Planning Commission sends to them. The legislative body does not need to send it back to the Planning Commission if it decides to amend it, but if it does send it back, the Planning Commission needs to work on it and hold another public hearing. We have provided a sample motion for, once we get to that point in the presentation.
Okay, I would just want to interrupt. Are you just came in, sir? Do you plan to speak today? Okay, I do need you to sign in, though, that you are here on the hearing.
Okay. So just wanted to recognize our Comprehensive Plan Committee members and Main Street Advisory members for their participation and all their hard work on this draft plan. We do have Doug, who's on our Planning Commission, the Comprehensive Plan Committee. We also have Caitlin Folger here with the Main Street Advisory Council. Am I missing anyone? We have Jennifer, she was in our Main Street manager. I think I have everyone. But they were vital to getting the plan where it is at this point, and their hard work is much appreciated. So now I'll go ahead and do an overview of the comprehensive plan as it states today. I do have a PowerPoint presentation that hopefully everyone can see. So that was the timeline that I went over a little bit ago, just kind of showing where we've been, where we're going, and like I said, hopefully we can have the comprehensive plan adopted in June, so that way we have a fresh document to move forward with our development plans, annexations, and proposed provisions to our code. There we go. So I'll start off by just briefly going over some of the significant updates that we've actually seen implemented since 2010. We've had a lot of community facilities and a lot of infrastructure completed, including the St. Mary's County Library, Captain Walter Francis Duke constructed in 2015. We've had wastewater treatment plant upgrades that are, that were completed in 2017, and we currently have an expansion going on right now that'll hopefully be completed this year. We've had, our Main Street designation was received in 2023. We've done several improvements to the Lenartown Wharf, installed wayfinding signage, lots of public art improvements, and I think we have a lot more coming on the way for that. Along with the wharf, there were boat slips and pump-out stations, all kinds of stuff involved for the actual wharf canoe and kayak rentals, sea plane rides, periodic sunset cruises. Playground equipment was installed, they adopted the 2019 Downtown Strategic Plan, 2022 Downtown Strategic Plan Phase 2. They did the widening of the intersection of Mount Maryland Route 5 and the Abel Street and Mookley Street, and there are lots of upgrading of pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure happening in that area as well. So for the overview, the comprehensive plan is really an overview. It's a guiding document. It doesn't get into specific details. That's where the ordinance and the town codes come into play. So really, when we're looking at the comprehensive plan, it's a policy document, and it shows and helps guide how we want to grow, where we want to see different improvements happen. It kind of gives guidance on what improvements we want to have as far as establishing specific policies, different programs, legislation. So as we've kind of noted in this comprehensive plan, we're going to be looking at zoning code amendments, subdivision amendments, and other policies that we can enact, but it doesn't actually get down to the details of anything. It's not going to tell you specifically that we're going to adopt a form-based code. It's saying we should look at adopting a form-based code. So that's the one thing I do want to clarify. The main elements of the comprehensive plan are dictated by the state under the land use article, so you have to include land use, housing, transportation, community facilities, sensitive areas, municipal growth, water resources, mineral resources, and fisheries. Within the document, you also need to show how you're going to be implementing the guides, the goals and action items. You have to stipulate what goals and action items you are developing. You have to provide a development capacity analysis. You have to show how you're going to be regulating the development, and you have to include areas of critical state concern in the sensitive areas. The town has additional elements that they've included for community character and design, downtown development, and the town waterfront. Now move on to the bulk of the, the document is within Section 2, Live, Work, Play. This is where we're looking at community facilities, parks and recreation, housing, and the downtown waterfront element. So each of these sections goes over the different goals and policy items that we're trying to go through, and I will go ahead through the proposed comments that the state had sent us, just to kind of give an update on where we are with those different facilities. So as the state noted, that within our community facilities element, we do have a description of our municipal facilities, educational facilities, medical emergency services, different parks, planned parks, different goals for our housing element, and how we're going to support infrastructure for those elements. So the state did come back with a few comments on our facilities, just giving us guidance on different programs that we can utilize. The one that we've already been utilizing is the DHCD's Maryland Passade Improvement Program, so we've utilized that for five years, but they did go through and just kind of gave us some different areas that we can look at if we need assistance, or if we need to look at how we can get resources for those community facilities. But otherwise, there really weren't any major changes to that section as far as the content as written. Under the housing element, we did get quite a hefty comment that we did not meet the minor, the minimum recommendations for the housing element as described in the land use article. Now, as we move forward, the state is requiring that all jurisdictions look at the requirements for fair workforce and low-income housing, as well as acknowledging a requirement to affirmatively, affirmatively further fair housing. So in some way, you have to address this requirement under the state. It started with their Housing Bill HB90. They do have a website that's full of resources that we can utilize to go ahead and look at that. So we did send this comment back to Mahan Reichel, our consultant, and they did provide some updated statistics and some recommendations on how we can update that language. The main element that I think that should be included is to have a goal and action item to state that we are going to do an in-depth housing study to kind of see where we're lacking and where we need to work on our housing needs and where those are. We did get some updated numbers that we will try to incorporate into the plan, and hopefully that'll address the concern to, for the land use article at this point. And that's all they had for the Section 2. We'll move on to Section 3. So under the Environment, Infrastructure, and Growth section, this is looking at our water resources, sensitive areas, transportation element, municipal growth element, and land use element. So this is the heart and soul of how the town operates, how it functions, and is really one of the, very important as far as future growth and how we're, we're going to grow in the town. So we did have several comments. Nothing was really major regarding our sensitive areas element. We needed to update some references to endangered and threatened habitats and species, so we will, of course, update any references along those lines. They did have a lot of comments about making sure that riparian buffers and strains and floodplains are protected, so we do want to make sure that they understand that we, we know that development has to comply with all state, federal, and local regulations as far as the environment is concerned. But we are adding, and we have added goals and action items to kind of look at the codes that we have existing and see if there's anything that needs to be updated. One personal recommendation was to create a Comprehensive Resource Protection Standards chapter within the town code. That would include forest conservation, floodplains, steep slopes, soils, wetland streams, and other sensitive areas. That way, it's all in one place and easy to find, so we can go ahead and move forward with that, if the comprehensive plan, when it gets adopted. Again, a lot of comments about the, there was several comments about protecting open space and concerns over what was going to happen with the Tudor Hall Farm property. As you know, that's a, quite a large swath of land that's located on and in the critical area, so we are, we've provided a response that the Tudor Hall Farm development is at the conceptual stage at this point. Any actual development plans will need to be reviewed and approved in accordance with all regulations. We do have a lot of things noted in the town waterfront plan that, you know, the town owns 239 acres, and 200 plus of those acres are proposed to remain and program open space to kind of protect the critical area and protect the environmental features while including some recreational elements. So hopefully, a lot of these concerns that the Maryland Department of Environment have will be addressed, knowing that we're working on and working through any of the issues that they have. Now, the town, you know, another comment that they had was that any increase in development in the Breton Bay watershed is detrimental, and while we recognize that, the town is a priority funding area. It is one of two development districts in St. Mary's County, so expect, growth is expected, and what we need to see how we're going to manage that and to protect the environment while doing so. So that's definitely an important consideration when we move forward with actual code revisions or development standards, things that we do after the comprehensive plan is adopted, because that's how we'll be able to protect those and to guide development. All right. So yeah, we had a lot of other comments, but again, it's relating to concerns over proposed developments and how we're going to address those, which I think that we've accomplished in kind of providing those responses to them. For the transportation element, we had a couple questions and concerns from the Maryland Department of Transportation. One of them was to consider developing a complete streets policy. I think, you know, that's one of the, an excellent idea for the town to consider, so we will look at adding a goal and action item to look at implementing a complete streets policy. That kind of gives you the guide on how to plan and develop streets where you have pedestrians, bicycles, and cars all taken into consideration, how that should function, especially in the downtown, that's important. They told us to look at recreational trails and different information as far as what we have and what we could improve upon in the transportation element. So we do have a couple notes about existing trails and recreational destinations, and we've proposed to expand on that to show the length of the trails and any additional information that we can include to kind of show what our inventory is now and what can be proposed later on. And the only other comment of note from the Maryland Department of Transportation was the electric vehicle charging infrastructure. We do have some information in the section about existing charging infrastructure, and we- we've just added that we can look at implementing additional as parking lots are expanded or renovated in the future. Under the Water Resources element, this again were comments from the Maryland Department of Environment. There were some clarifying questions that they had regarding the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. So there's a couple different numbers that were posed in the actual documents. Page 55 of the document states that full buildout in 2037 equates to 4,386 EDUs. However, on page 57, there are 4,222 total active EDU connections noted. So for clarification purposes, we are projected, as far as what future development is coming and what's in our pipeline, to need 4,386 EDUs. The expansion of the wastewater treatment plant will accommodate 4,222 EDUs at this point in time. And of course, you have to note that the wastewater treatment plant upgrade is going to be done this year, and the proposed full buildout is 2037. So any additional EDUs will need to be, you know, go through the process, and any improvements will need to happen at that point. I think that's mainly it for theirs. They did mention that there was some questions about our EDU calculations and whether or not it included non-residential uses. And based on the town's wastewater capacity management plan that was done in 2021 by our consultant, GHD, the EDU counts that they're using for these projections does include non-residential uses as well. So we're going to update the language just to clarify that it does include all non-residential and residential uses for the total projected EDUs in 2037. And our land use elements, they didn't have any comments for the most part, except for kind of looking to see if there was some language under the land use element that may be better suited for the transportation element. So we can certainly look at that and update as needed. But the land use element is really where we decide what is being built on the different properties. So we do have, let's see what's in here. Oops, I forgot to update the title. But this one right here is the land use, just ignore our future roads. So this is our proposed land use map, which you can see on here. This is the existing within the town boundary. So we have HUD, residential, commercial, institutional, and then we have recreational. So this kind of shows where we are within the existing town. So this is how we decide what gets built and what zone is associated with a piece of our zone. So if someone requests a rezoning, and they say that, you know, if they have something now that's currently zoned to commercial, and they want it to be residential, and residential isn't allowed in this commercial zone, then you would have to go through a Comprehensive Plan Amendment and actually rezone that on the Comprehensive Land Use Plan in order to move forward with that. So this is very important, and that ties into our municipal growth area as well, which is another important aspect of our Comprehensive Plan. So this shows where we can actually grow outside of the existing town boundary. The area that's kind of shown in the dashed is the existing St. Mary's County Development District. You're not proposing to go outside of that with this Comprehensive Plan Amendment. And then you can see that we have proposed different land uses for these properties that are currently outside of the town boundary, so that way we can decide what zones they are given, what they're going to organization as part of the development. I think, let's see. So we do have, in the back of the room, we did have a synopsis of the Comprehensive Plan, and on the back sheet of that, there is a QR code that if you wanted to go in and actually look at a full draft of the Comprehensive Plan, it is on the town's website, so you can look at that if you'd like. Let's see. Another comment that we received from the state was regarding mineral resources element. The town does not allow mining within its district, within its boundaries. So we did add the note that they recommended, just saying that gravel is the only known mineral in or around town, and currently, the town ordinances do not permit gravel mines within its boundaries. So we did include that. And they did add a note about the sustainable community in Maryland Main Street, making sure that the action plan that's outlined within that lines up with the Comprehensive Plan. So one of the things that staff started working on as part of the Main Street Advisory Council was to compile a spreadsheet that has all the goals and action items for Main Street, the Sustainable Communities Plan, Comprehensive Plan, Downtown Plan, and the Waterfront Plan. So that will be made available once that's put together and kind of vetted for, for everyone to see. Okay. Section 4. So Section 4 is the implementation section. Hmm. I did turn it off, so I'm very sorry. Section 4 is implementation, and this is really how we're going to be monitoring and ensuring that the goals and action items in the Comprehensive Plan are being implemented and moving forward. So we have put in a lot of work to how that's going to happen. The Planning Commission is really the main advisory board, recommending board, when it comes to the Comprehensive Plan goals and action items. So that will be a part of the annual review process, and we'll have the spreadsheet that shows all the different goals and action items as they are completed or moving forward. We will note that, and each year, we'll make sure that we are checking off to see if there's anything that we need to be looking at, anything we need to be focusing on, and what's been completed, so we can keep that moving forward. I think that sums up the, I'll go to the next slide. So again, just to kind of reiterate, we had a lot of teamwork working through this Comprehensive Plan draft. Communication was very essential when you have a consultant and different boards and staff working on something. And again, the Comprehensive Steering, Comprehensive Plan Committee, Main Street Advisory Council, the consultant and town staff, all worked hard together to make sure that this is a good draft of the town to kind of move forward with. The staff's recommendation, we have a sample motion for you to consider, which I will go ahead and just kind of relay now, is I move to recommend or delay to the Town Council the adoption of the 2025 Lennertown Comprehensive Plan Update in accordance with the land use article of the State of Maryland and its code. And that concludes my presentation. We did already go over the comments that were entered into the record, so now I will turn it back over to the chair. Do we have any comments from the audience at this time? Do you have a sheet, so we know who's speaking? Nobody, nobody wanted to speak? Then, do we have any comments we want to make before we close this portion of the meeting? Before we move on, I'll go ahead, since I didn't really get to show the audience the municipal growth area, since this is kind of an important part of it, if you'll give me just a minute, I'll make sure that they can see it as well. So, what do you audience? So we do have the proposed municipal growth area. The existing town boundary is outlined in gray, and then you can see the municipal growth boundary is shown in red, and then we have our proposed land uses. So the blue is for the HUD. We just have a little bit of purple, institutional. Residential is yellow, and then the commercial is outlined in red. So hopefully, it ties into the existing outline of the town and what the existing zones are. So we have to, let's look at that.
Did we do that well?
Thank you. Definitely like Dan White. And then, just to reiterate, we do have the Town Council public hearing, so there will be another chance for public comments and input at the April meeting for council.
I just want to say, I want to thank everybody that was on that Comprehensive Committee. It was very, very valuable, and it certainly is what we will be looking at, you know, as we have specific items that come up before us each month. I know it was a lot of work, even, I mean, you have the basic there, but then it's a lot of work updating it, and I do appreciate that. And I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing and reopen our zoning board meeting.
I'll make a motion to close public hearing and reopen. Second?
Okay. We did the other business already, so I don't think we have any other business to discuss. I just had a question. We are coming up to the town breakfast.
Yeah, yes, I will go over that. I just, we need to wrap this up first, so.
We do need the motion for the Comprehensive Plan.
Oh, right.
If you make a motion for the council.
No, that's okay.
We talked about it so much. I do need a motion.
The way it works is, you know, we had to send it to the state after, we had to give them 60 days, I think I keep saying 90 days, but it's 60.
60 days.
It seems like 90 days, but they got the comments back, which you just went over, the last day, late to the last day. But we did receive them, and there was, so we will respond to those, and that's why we gave you the responses, so you can see that we, they are either being addressed or will be addressed. So those will be incorporated into the draft that you already have seen, and then we'll hold another public hearing for the council, and then if there's any changes that they want to make, then it would be adopted after that. But for today, if you are comfortable with recommending what you heard about today to the council to have their public hearing, is what we all would be doing today.
And do we need to state separately that we include the answers that were sent back to the state, or that?
No, it'll be in the minutes that you were apprised of what the comments were and what we ended up responding.
So let me compete as quickly as I can.
Okay. Okay, I can make, I can make the motion. So I move to recommend to the Town Council the adoption of the 2025 Lennertown Comprehensive Plan Update in accordance with the land use article of the State of Maryland's annotated code.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other comments about anything?
I don't remember the name of it, LaChelle, but there was a group that worked on some recommendations for how you decide what businesses may or may not be recommended. Do you remember?
In the downtown?
Yes.
Yeah. So we did work on, and we had a committee that worked on it, looking at not, you know, there was a push to not allow franchises in the downtown, I think that's what you're talking about. The committee did come up with some recommendations, but then, as it was discussed more and more, they felt that it really was going down a slippery slope, because if you started saying, "Oh, we don't want this downtown," there was, there was a lot of lawsuits around the country that were being, that were in court at the time, and people were, even if they adopted those ordinance, they were getting sued over them. And the other thing was, you know, we really just felt like if you said, "Oh, I don't want this downtown," we went through this whenever Duncan, before Duncan Dunn came in. There was another franchise that was proposed there, and everyone, and lots of people came out against it, we didn't want that, and they ended up going away. But then, if you say you don't want a franchise, then Duncan came in, and Duncan, everybody wanted Duncan. So if you would, if we would have adopted an ordinance, ordinance like that, then Duncan couldn't have come in. Or maybe there was something else that wants to come downtown, and we have empty buildings, and everybody wants that, but if you have adopted this ordinance that's so strict, that probably wouldn't hold up in court anyway, then that, they decided that we weren't going to move that forward. But what we want to do is really update the zoning and make sure that we're protected. Just like when Duncan did come in, you recommended changes to what they were proposing as far as the facade, to make it look more like the downtown. So we just need to make sure that we have the proper ordinances in place and that we update it. Once we get this comp plan done, that's the next step, is to update our ordinances again, to make sure that we're protected to the best of our ability.
Okay. Thank you very much.
That's why we didn't move that forward.
Okay.
And then the State of the Town, I did want to, you mentioned that earlier, that was going to be April 11th, it's a Friday, it'll be at the Rex in the theater like it was before. It's actually the 25th anniversary of the Lennertown Business Association being established, so it will kind of be a celebration of that, and we hope that all the previous presidents are going to be there of the LBA, and we can kind of celebrate all the achievements over the last 25 years. It starts at 7:30, and there'll be breakfast, and then, not a lot of speaking this year, but we'll, we'll have some just, you know, kind of highlights. Everyone's invited, so. So if we can, if anybody else, how many? May I have a motion for adjournment then?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, thank you, everybody, for coming today. It was a lot of work that we got accomplished.